All right, welcome, everybody. If I could have Reverend Jack Maraz from the Word of Life Church join us in the front.
Good evening, Mayor. The name's Maraz, Maris. Yeah, it gets misspelled all the time. For all bow our heads. Heavenly Father, great and mighty God that you are, we thank you for your mercy and your grace. We ask you tonight to reach down and to bless this Los Banas City Council meeting. Bless our mayor and city council members. Help them to make all the right decisions on all the right matters brought up here tonight. Bless and watch over our police department, fire department, and emergency responders. We also ask you, Lord, to bless and watch over all the citizens of this growing city of Los Banas. And we pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:01. If I could have Commander Raina help us with the pledge.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, go ahead, be seated. All right, if I could have a roll call? Here. All right, item four, if I could have a consideration of approval of the agenda. I have a motion to approve. Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Lambert?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Move on to number five, presentations. I get to go mobile for this one. All right, so if I could have Rosemary Soto come up here. All right, Rosemary. In recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the city of Los Banas for being named Employee of the Month for April 2023, I want to congratulate you, so. All right. This next item is a proclamation recognizing the National Day of Prayer. Whereas in God we trust is more than a slogan that appears on our currency. It describes an attitude shared by most of those founded in a great nation. And whereas those who trust God pray, and the history of our country has been and continues to be indelibly marked by the people who come to God in prayer. And whereas while prayer is a deep personal experience and its expression is shaped by different religious convictions, it's meaningful part of life in many people. And whereas our greatest leaders have always turned in prayer in times of crisis, and many men and women representing every walk of life pray. And whereas the President and the Governors of the United States have set aside a special day of prayer and invite all Californians to pray for our nation and our state. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Banas do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 4, 2023, as the National Day of Prayer in Los Banas, and we encourage our fellow citizens to humbly join us in prayer, asking that God would give his people wisdom to differentiate between what is important and what is not, the courage to make difficult decisions, a willingness to ask for and receive forgiveness, and the strength to meet the challenges that come before us. Perfect. Can I have Pastor Hammond come up? Here you go, Pastor.
Thank you.
All right, this next item is also a proclamation recognizing National Public Works Week. Do I have anybody from Public Works here? All right. He pretended not to know me. That was kind of cool. Did you see that? Oh, hey there, how are you? Hi there. All right. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and service that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Los Banas. Whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals, who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government, and the private sector, responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, airports, parks, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas it is in the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Los Banas to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Los Banas hereby designate the week of May 21st to 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week in the city of Los Banas, and urge all citizens to join with representatives in American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contribution they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. And also, just on another note, what these people do every day, and I know we have a Public Works Week, but in my opinion, we just, every day is Public Works Day. You know, the challenges we've had, the challenges that I hear about, they're the ones doing it, they're the ones getting it done. And so, you know, whether that be, you know, a leak, a break in something, something needs to get fixed, our roads, they are on it every single day. So I want to thank you. Thank you for everything that you do. Who wants it? It's all fun and games so your toilet doesn't flush, just saying. You want to know, you want to know some heroes? All right. The next item is really near and dear to me, and this is a proclamation recognizing National Police Week and the Peace Officers Memorial Day. So I already know who's, who needs to come up here. It's kind of a, kind of a no-brainer. Good commanders take photos. All right. Whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 14th to be dedicated as National Police Week, and May 15th of each year is to be Police Officers Memorial Day. Whereas law enforcement officers are guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free, warriors in the war against crime, and dedicated in the perseverance of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 25,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. Whereas new names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the wall of the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff each year on this day. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Banas do hereby proclaim the week of May 14th to the 20th, 2023, as Police Week in the city of Los Banas, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in community and communities across the nation. On a separate note, I also want to give some further recognition, just, just to our agency back home. In the United States, 42 police officers have been murdered in the line of duty this year, this year alone. And that's, that's a pretty high number. And so, for these men and women who go out and do their, do these shifts, you know, the calls for service, everything, everything is dangerous, right? Well, sometimes we get called above and beyond those things. So as I'm talking to you right now, the police chief in the city of Livingston, who suddenly passed away yesterday, who's been a longtime resident of the city of Los Banas, is on his way home. And these men and women here are going to escort him home today. So thank you. Give it, give it to the rookie. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number six, which would be our public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that's within the jurisdiction of the city council, includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted in the city council chambers information wall. At this time, I'd like to invite members of the public to come forward and speak, and please, just a reminder to silence or turn off your cell phones.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. With a million, oh, Catherine Uli, I am a member of District Four in Los Banas, a resident, rather. With a million dollars that is budgeted for the Los Banas Animal Shelter, our city has a unique opportunity to positively impact the trajectory of animals in our community. We can choose to do more of the same, just wrapped up a little prettier, or we can make decisions that lead to real change, the kind of change that could put us on the path to a no-kill shelter. We don't have to rely on outside organizations to come and to save us. We can save ourselves, and we need to start with the root of the problem, the lack of low-cost and/or free spay-neuter services here in Los Banas. The new shelter space must have an equipped exam room and surgical suite suitable to hold spay-neuter clinics. The lack of a current medical director at this time is not an excuse to not have this incorporated into the design. Next to providing housing for the cats away from the dogs, this is the most important design feature of this project. The only way we will ever get a handle on the animal overpopulation in this community is to have these services available locally through the city. Now, this is a folder of cats that I have spayed and neutered on my own. I am not a 501(c)(3). I'm just an individual who's tried to make a difference over the last decade in this community. Every single one of these pages, for almost all of it, with the exception of this portion here, was done outside of town. And it's really unreasonable to expect other people who are trying to make a difference to have to drive outside of town, take an entire day to go there and do these things. And, you know, and then within the city, with the residents who are trying to get their animals spayed and neutered, a $50 voucher for a $300 procedure hardly makes anything low-cost and affordable. And then the flip side, they can drive out of town, spend all their gas money, take a day off from work, which also makes it not affordable. And, you know, and we wonder, well, we don't wonder, I think most of us do know why we have a problem in the community with an overpopulation. So in addition to making local, low-cost spay-neuter an absolute priority of whatever shelter project we end up doing, I also encourage the city to create an animal advisory committee. There are a multitude of people in this town with a ray of knowledge in relation to issues that directly impact the shelter and the animals within our community. It is time that we harness this expertise and create this committee in our city. I hope to see the creation of an animal advisory committee on a very near city council agenda. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Kami Avalar. I am a resident at 1810 Pitzer Way, District Two. We have bought our house 22 years ago, very excited. We backed up to the rail trail, and at that time, we were oh-so-happy of, in the future, there was going to be a trail built there, and we could walk all the way through town. Well, that has turned into a nightmare. 22 years, the last five has been nothing but people breaking into our cars, people breaking into our homes, people stealing things out of our backyards. It started with people walking down the trail at night, there were assaults, and then it happened, then the homeless population came in, and it got progressively worse. And then the homeless population got put over by Home Depot, and we are next to Home Depot. So it just stayed, it never went away. And now that entire rail trail at the other end is nothing but homeless people. In fact, I'd like to show you a picture of my, looking right out my back window. It's getting tougher and tougher. I don't get a full night's sleep anymore, which was rare anyhow, but it's even worse. It's a nightly occurrence. Not only is it noise, it's fires. The other day, there was a bonfire so big, I could see it clearly from my house, right next to the field that had been plowed. I really don't want my house to burn down. All right, there's police, there's fire trucks, there's ambulance, there are random cars just drive up and down that rail trail. Don't know why, they're not supposed to be there, but they do. So at this point, I, I've had, I've had enough. I can't do it anymore. All you did was move the problem from Home Depot to behind us. And that's not fair to our neighborhood. I don't see that on the canal. I don't see one person, one homeless person on the canal. Tell me why that is. I walked that trail too. There are a lot of areas in, in Los Banas where they could be moved. They don't need to be right next to the neighborhood, where they have been for a long time. And it's, I'm sure they're not behind your house, and I'm sure you don't want them behind your house. So it's easy to ignore the problem, they're kind of tucked away now back there, but they're behind me, and they're behind a lot of my other neighbors. So we need to do something, you need to do something about this. Next, on, that leads me to my next issue. The Shaughnessy Village neighborhood that was built right along 152 Mercy Springs, it, first the road, there was a road that was there that was unsafe, not built properly, so the road was closed. I don't, I'm not sure what's going on with that between you guys and Caltrans on who is going to fix that, but there wasn't any, there was no sidewalk put in, there was no landscaping. I mean, I look at all the other new home developments, look how nice, they have sidewalks, they have trees, it looks really nice. Look at this, it's a dirt ditch next to a wall. I mean, I don't see that in the planning committee notes about how, that's how we're supposed to build in Los Banas, don't see that anywhere. Not only that, the park, this is the park that's in that same neighborhood, that the people who bought those houses paid for this park, only what do you see? Big dirt field, there's nothing there. Why is there nothing there? Again, all the other new neighborhoods, I see really nice parks, really nice landscaping, there's nothing there. It's like our neighborhood, you guys have just decided to, I don't know, just make us go down in value. I'm not sure what the, what the issue is, but not happy, not happy at all, and I need it addressed. And Mr. Begonia, you have three emails, three messages from me, which I would like one returned. Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name is Mary Alverenga, and I've emailed you guys a couple of times. And the east side of the trail has been cleared, except for there's still some garbage from the guys that have been staying the night over there. My problem, I know that homeless people have to sleep somewhere, they're people, and I have an issue with this becoming worse and worse and worse. And the traffic on the weekend, when the cars are just riding like 30, 40 miles an hour, and I don't, you can't call the police and then have them catch them, because you just, it, it goes, you can't, the timing isn't right. But if the police could just, like, set a patrol on a consistent basis, then maybe you could catch these cars going by and stop them. When it comes to the homeless people, is there like an ID kind of system set up to where the homeless, when they come to town and they go for help, that they get an ID that they're homeless and in this town, so that you can kind of count how many people are homeless in our town? Is there anything set up like that? I mean, how can you keep track if you don't have an ID system?
We do have a homeless census that we do.
But I mean, to where they carry IDs, so that...
Homeless people tend to not carry IDs.
But you can get them to carry IDs. If you, if they're staying in something that you're providing for them, they should have IDs. And if they're causing problems, then maybe you could corral them up and get them to clean up the messes that other homeless people are making, so that it doesn't tax Public Works or the city to clean it up. You see how, what I'm going for? You know, I'm just trying to come up with something that would work. You know, you're not going, you're just going to be walking around pushing these people from place to place to place, but if you don't get homeless people to take responsibility in some way, then they're just going to keep doing the same thing. So I'm just kind of throwing that out there, see if you could come up with some kind of way to make them responsible for what they do. Maybe it would work. Maybe people would say, ah, I don't want to go to those bagnols because I have to carry an ID, and I might have to clean up other people's stuff. So anyway, that's my issue, what I thought I would throw out there.
Hello. My name is Russ Ramirez, I live at 1826 Pitzer Way. Like Tony and Kami, I've been here 22 years. I have to say, you know, the, the rail trail was a blessing, but now it's become much more than that. We call it the, the superhighway, the fence, the on-place road, there's gates, gone. Every time we fix it, the five acres behind Home Depot, that guy, the poor guy that, that used to own that, right, he passed, and now it's the kids. Fixes the fence, gone. Ballard's put up, gone. Every single day, I have cameras, I have 12 cameras around my house. I have a camera on my second story, I can see the rail trail behind me, everything goes on. I don't know how many officers I know. I mean, it's incredible. Just this past Saturday, I'm sitting on my couch watching TV, 7:00 AM, I see a guy walk across my lawn. I recognized him, he's from the camp behind us. Guess where he went? My next-door neighbor's backyard, walked right in the backyard. I caught him coming out, I called the, the police, probably... I called the police, probably five minutes, got there. I'm in the middle of the street, police officer comes up, and I tell him, I go, "He just turned the corner, so he takes off, can't find him." He did it to five more houses by the end of the street. Two hours later, watching my cameras in the back of my house, guess who I see? Same guy. My next-door neighbor on the other side, guy jumps his fence last year, gets into his house, he's in his house. Police called. God forbid something would have happened to him violent. I don't know what the answer is. If I did, I'd be sitting in your seat. I don't know what the answer is. I know, I think I know part of the law, right? We can't kick them off public land unless we have enough beds for the number of homeless people. I think that's what I read, I'm not an expert. Got to figure it out. I'm willing to help. I can't have a superhighway living behind me. It's just bad. Fire department, I call them, you check it, how many times I've called the fire department in the past two years? They light the trees on fire. Light the trees on fire, it's not in the bonfire that Tony and Kami were talking about. They light the trees on fire. Police had to come put one of the fires out. Guess what was still burning the next morning? Had to call the fire department out to come and do it, because cops, he couldn't do it, sorry, apologize, but he couldn't put the fire out. Got to figure something out. It's getting dangerous. I know they have to sleep someplace, we have to figure it out. Because I'm not gonna, I got five grandkids, all live in this town within two and a half miles. I'm not gonna endanger my family. I got 12 cameras around my house. I know everything that goes on in my neighborhood, for years and years and years. I work at home, I'm home every day, I'm in my office from 6:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night. I almost missed this meeting because I didn't know, I forgot it was tonight, but I thought it was that important to come talk to you. We have to figure it out. Even if you put Bowers back up on that, we gotta get the cars off there. Guess, guess how they moved? Remember where they were across from your old restaurant? Was there eight, nine tents there? They got kicked out, guess where they went? Right behind McDonald's and rail trail. You know how they got there? All those cars. Cars moved them in. They didn't move the stuff, you didn't see them pushing it across the street? Cars moved them in. Got to figure it out. Police officer told me on Saturday, nothing he could do, his hands are tied. I get it. Even if I would have caught him, if he would have caught him, he said there's nothing he could do because he didn't take anything. Could have given him a trespass. Got to fix it. Willing to help. Got to fix it. Can't ignore it, it's getting bad. Thank you.
My name is Yvonne, and everything she said is what's going on with us. My fence has been put on fire twice. I had to, you can check with Laura Connolly at Farmers, I had to finally fill out a claim. The police department, I had two captains out there the other night, 3:00 in the morning, I got woken up when my fence was on fire, and I'm, it was engulfed in flames. Four or five of your beautiful, mature trees that are on the rail trail, they're all black. They're probably gonna die. My German Shepherd, my alpha male was poisoned, and you can verify that with Dr. Fred in Chachilla, because he had foam, and he had drool, and there was blood, and that was indicative of a poison. The reason I say my alpha male is because my other German Shepherds that I have, they were gonna take whatever they gave him. I have it on film, unfortunately, I accidentally deleted the footage, but I have plenty of cameras too, just like you guys do. They, those people are jumping over the fence because they're trying to get to my husband's shop, he has industrial tools, he has a lot of money in tools. We have cars that we find the doors open to, we've chased them off, my husband has actual pictures of them dealing drugs back there. Now, here's the thing, I'm compassionate with those homeless people, I feel sorry for them. I've gone out with our church, and we've given them, you know, we've fed the homeless, we've given them hygiene packs, we've given them blankets, we've given them jackets. Some of those are appreciative of it, and some don't give a damn, they don't care, they don't want to be helped, they're arrogant, they're violent, a lot of them are mentally unstable, and that's just gonna turn into a tragedy. When the two captains came out to put out the fire, and by the way, it's a 10-foot section, and this was just a couple of nights ago, last week, they lit another section on fire. Here's the thing, I don't know if it's deliberate, because they're vandalizing, and that's private property, and I get it, you know, they can camp wherever they want, but I'll tell you what, I was out there yesterday, and I was talking to some of those homeless people, and I asked them, "How did you guys wind up over here?" Now, the reason I'm just aware of this now is because my mother, unfortunately, was diagnosed with breast cancer. She's in corps school, I had been in corps school for the last five months, we just finally finished all her radiation treatments, so I've been away. So, I only come home for a day or two, do my meal plans for my husband, do his laundry, make sure the house is, you know, fixed, and, you know, buy groceries and whatnot, and then I'm gone again. Because she had to go daily for her radiation. So, I'm just getting wind of all this that has happened. I asked them, I go, "What happened to our fence?" So, it's becoming, it's problematic. Now, like I said, some of these people want help, some don't care. They don't care, they're mentally unstable, and that's obvious. I walked back there, I talked to the homeless people, I asked them, "How did you guys wind up over here? You guys were over there by Taco Bell or Rally's." And by the way, you can see it from the street, it's horrible, there's defecation back there, because I went back there, there's defecation, there's needles, there's rotten food, there's tons of trash, which, by the way, you guys are gonna eventually have a rodent problem. I can't see how you're not. But it's, something has to be done, this is unacceptable. I have reports that I'm waiting on from the fire department. I also had an officer, Warren, come out at 4:00 in the morning, I waited for him to come over so that he can make a report as well. I'm not sure what legal recourse I have, and I hate to even throw that out there, but I'm tired of it. Those people have poisoned our dogs, they keep jumping over the fence to try to vandalize or steal whatever they can, probably to fix their drug habit. You know, like I said, my husband has pictures of him, of people dealing, it's obvious they're dealing, and I have compassion for them, but some of them don't want help. Some of them don't care, some of them are violent, they're scary, and they don't, they just don't have any regard or respect, and it's bad. It's really bad. They keep attacking their tents and their, because they need, I guess, shade against our fence. So, you know, what are we supposed to do? I went to the police department, no offense, Mr. Breezy, you know, and I told the police officer, I said, "You know, they keep kicking my fence boards in," which my male German Shepherds get out, and I've had to pay impound fees to get them out. When I went to the police station, I said, "Hey, this is, this is an ongoing problem, what do I do?" The gentleman, and I'm sure he only said this because he was frustrated, but his response to me was, "Do you own a gun?" I'm not gonna shoot anybody, you know, but, and it's probably because they're just as flustered as everybody else.
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
You need to do something.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Cristhian Santos, representing the Office Congressman John Duarte. Our Office would like to just express our gratitude for the opportunity to listen to our constituents here in Los Banos at today's mobile district office here at City Hall. Thank you especially to City Manager Pineda for helping me set that up, I had a couple of really great conversations, and hopefully this mobile district office is the first of many. We would also like to recognize National Police Week, and congratulations again to Detective Guadalupe Moreno, the 2023 Officer of the Year for the Los Banos Police Department. I was able to join that ceremony at the Merced Elks Lodge downtown, and it was also an honor to be a part of the Merced County Peace Officer Memorial yesterday morning. The Office Congressman John Duarte would also like to send our sincere condolences to the family of Livingston Police Chief Chuck Hale, our thoughts and prayers are with the family. And regarding our Office's recent vote in HR 2, while Congressman Duarte wholeheartedly supports enhanced border security, we believe Valley families deserve practical solutions that both Democrats and Republicans can support. Unfortunately, we feel this bill would harm many families that work in our Valley and create difficulties for our local food producers at a time when food inflation is already very high. We believe we could do better. With hard work from both parties, we can deliver real results to fix DACA and bring our neighbors out of the shadows, ensure a flexible and effective guest worker program, and protect our border. Congressman Duarte encourages his colleagues from both parties to work on a bipartisan bill that benefits our Valley working families and strengthens our nation's economy. We will continue to advocate for millions of dollars of federal funding for the water infrastructure projects in our community funding projects list, including Del Prado Canyon Reservoir, which would provide desperately needed west-side water storage for generations, and the Los Banos Creek Recovery and Recharge Project, which would help replenish depleted west-side aquifers. We look forward to keeping the City of Los Banos updated on developments out of the Appropriations Committee as this process progresses, and we thank you for your time tonight.
Hi, City Council members, City Manager staff. My name's Taylor Wolfson, I'm from Santa Cruz, California, and I am a property owner here in downtown Los Banos, as well as a member of the P-Bid Board. And it's long overdue, but I wanted to take some time and introduce Maribel Garcia, who is an 18-year member of the Los Banos community, who has taken over for the Downtown Association as well as the P-Bid, and is sort of running things, and she will be here to update you on a more regular basis, so you guys have a better idea of what's happening. And with that, Maribel?
I'm so nervous. I want to say good evening, Mayor, City Manager, Council and staff. I am very honored to be here and to be working for the Los Banos Downtown Association. I would like to talk briefly about Casino Night. The event included dinner, signature cocktails, and a variety of casino games. It was held at the Lopes Barn on April 29th. There was a live and silent auction, we also had opportunity prizes for attendees to win. Our sponsors and attendees were very pleased with the outcome. The top sponsors were David Santos Farming, 209 Jams David Souza, Center Health, Wynn Decker, Young's, Mid Valley Disposal, and Blue Agave Bar and Grill. The Downtown Association would like to thank everyone that came out to support us. All the money that was raised will be going into the beautification and the revitalization of the downtown. The Fourth of July celebration is our upcoming event. It will be, it will be on Saturday, July 1st. It is a free event for the community, start time will be at 4:00 PM at the Henry Miller Plaza, with live music, beer booth, food vendors, arts and crafts, carnival rides, obstacle course, and fireworks show. Tickets will be sold in advance for the carnival rides at the Downtown Association. Our fireworks booth has been moved to a new location, it will be at Carl's Jr. next to Walmart at 1551 West Pacheco Boulevard, from June 28th through July 4th. Applications for vendors can be found on the website, www.downtownlosbanas.com. Applications for volunteers will be uploaded to the website. The Downtown Association is very excited that a date has finally been picked for the association and the chamber mixer. It will be held on July 27th. Further updates coming soon. 21st of September will be Farm to Table, we will have more updates at the next meeting. The 2023 Farmer Agriculture Leader of the Year nomination form will be on the website and social media. You can also pick up a form at the Downtown Association. Thank you for your time and have a wonderful evening.
Hello, my name is Kathy Burnell, I've been here about a year and a half now. I'm gonna ride on Kathy's coattail in regards to the stray animals around. Ken, hi. Biggins, didn't know that was you. And on that note, I've never seen so many stray dogs and cats. I just want to propose that owners be required to chip their pets, because when they're found and they're stray and they're lost or whatever, the owners need to be accountable. You know, no more, you know, "I lost them again, I lost them again, I lost them again." The owners need to be accountable. So, I want to say that with the adversary group, maybe a committee, starting a committee, but to really have them chipped. You know, they need to be chipped and neutered or spayed for sure. And, yeah, yeah, if the dogs are a perpetual problem, and they keep getting out, maybe there's a fine for the owners. You know, again, enough is enough also. I lived in Mexico for two months, and I kid you not, I've never seen any more stray dogs than I do here in Los Banos. Okay, thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
This is my very first time at a council meeting, and I've lived here for 23 years on Pitzer Way. And I've seen the area grow. First of all, behind my house was part of the trail, and the elevator was the first thing to go, which was nice, and then I heard that the city was going to be planting trees. Now, I'm here, I've heard all the stories of other people on Pitzer Way, mine hasn't been as difficult as some of you have spoken, and now, I'm really kind of concerned, because I'm retired, and I've been here 23 years, and now I'm 85, and I know, I live in a two-story home, my bedroom is upstairs, I sleep with the windows open, I know exactly what they're talking about on the trail. And I did finally, I thought I was the only person that was coming and talking about how the homeless were behind, where the trees were planted. And so, here I am to thank Los Banos for continuing the rail trail to our, to the other side of town compared to the other. And I used to walk that trail and all the way down to the apartments with my dogs, and I no longer do that anymore. I have to get in my car and go someplace else because of all the homeless, and it is very concerning to me to have to go by them and they stare at you, and I thought it's best that I stay away. But, at nighttime, I do want to thank the policemen or the code department for at least going down the trail with a big spotlight, and because it shines on the back of our homes, I know they're probably looking for more homeless. Sometimes I think I hear them down in the canal, they know how to climb fences and everything. And I just want to thank so much, I've come to love this community. I also came from a small community in Wisconsin, and I know what it is for small towns, I love small towns. And I thank Los Banos for putting those beautiful, the trees that have grown into beautiful, full trees. And this year, after all the rain we had, those trees turned in orange, the leaves turned orange, red, and yellow, and absolutely beautiful. If you've never been on that side of town, where it starts at McDonald's and you walk down the path, to have that canopy there and the double trees is so wonderful that the community put those in, and I wish, I am hoping that the other side of the trail going down to the apartments, that they can be blessed with such, really, the trees are beautiful. But, the homeless have trashed it, and it's sad, it really is. But, my main thing here, I thank the policemen who come with their cars, some are not marked, I don't know if they're unmarked- Some are not marked, I don't know if they're unmarked cars or not, but I know, I think the ones with the spotlights that go on my wall. And I'm awake, I hear what's going on too. So I agree with all my Pitzer Way families, so, you know. Okay, thank you.
Hi there, my name is Adam Avlar. I've been here for, what, since I was eight, so 23 years of my life. Lived with my parents here at Pitzer when I first moved here. Rail trail was a good idea, it looked great, kind of thought it was funny how we got skipped on the asphalt part of it, literally just that section behind our area, kind of random. Then I moved over towards Shawnee City Village. So again, now, besides that part, we got Deans Way, Caltrans, that whole issue, that's already a nightmare. So that was nice to live there, have a nice turn to my house for all of a month if that, and then that's gone. Then we have the homeless problem, which you guys already know everything about it. I can repeat it again if you want to hear it, but at this point, I think you're getting sick of it, and there's probably more of us. So it actually is really good to see actually all of College Greens kind of getting together here on this, because it is a problem. I have a one-year-old and three-year-old son. We live right next to an elementary school. And the homeless are how far away now where you guys are putting them now? Not really looking too good, I think, in my opinion. Now with my kids, I don't even like taking them out at night. How sad is that? You get a rail trail, like I said, with all these nice looks, everything's supposed to look good. No, not even going to take them out, because it's not worth it, what's going to happen? Would you bring your kids around homeless people? Then let's talk about trash day. What happens with a trash day? Homeless people, what are they going to do? Right to the trash cans, which is supposed to be illegal, right? Federal offense, going through people's trash, yada, yada. Nothing happens. I have had to wake up countless times in the morning, pick up all the trash. I've been fined for the homeless people getting in my trash cans. Now why is that my problem? I got to get up, I work, started at 4:00 AM. I came here just to be here. I work 10, 12 hours usually every day. And I'm here just to make this, and I'm leaving my wife at home right now, who's had maybe three hours of sleep, just so we can get this out there. So it's a serious problem, it's got to be fixed. And then even with the park. So we got skipped on the asphalt for the rail trail, we got the road shut down, and now we got that park that we're supposed to get, and it's gone. And remember, we called multiple times, the tumbleweeds were coming in, saw coming. No one did anything, high wind came in, blew the tumbleweeds over everything. I went home on my day off, started pulling up people's yards and started piling them in the middle of the thing, because I felt bad for other people. I'm watching stay-at-home moms trying to get stuff, and they can't do it, it's all prickly. So I'm out there helping other people. So that's just another problem. So I'd really like to get that in again. We moved, it's been two years, almost three now, about two years with the developments since I moved in. House is there earlier than me a little bit. So before my kids turned 15, I'd like to let them use that new park while they might have a chance. That'd be really nice, which was a big reason why I moved there. So if we can get something like that going, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Blanche George, and I live in the downtown area. I'm also an Elk member. I just wanted to let you guys know that we did, on the 5th of this month, complete a project, the grant that we had gotten for $2,500 to take care of the veterans at the stand-down. We did do that. I had placed on your desk a picture of a veteran, one of the veterans out of the 67 that we were able to help. The first annual stand-down was in Atwater. The second stand-down was in Merced. And we are pushing that the next stand-down is going to be the best stand-down, because it'll be in Los Banos. Onto a different subject, there is an agenda item, Agenda Number Eight, which is a consideration of approval for the project home key for the homeless. Just so you can know, it did talk in there about the point-in-time count. The Elks were involved in this, I was involved in this. Bethel was wonderful hosting us, and all of us volunteers counted the homeless very early in the morning. Sorry, I'm nervous. About Section Eight, I do appreciate, and I want to pull up because I'm very nervous, the individuals that are going to be building the new homeless room home key, Shangri-La. Just so you can know, I've seen their other projects. I'm very jealous of their Salinas project. It looks beautiful, and it functions well. So I just wanted to say on going forward with the Shangri-La construction is really important. I have just one small request, because you know me, I'm always, I also deal with the homeless pets, that if part of that project, just a little bit, can include the animals for them. But other than that, I fully endorse it, I can't wait to see it, and I'm sure it's going to be done next week. But I know that you guys have been speeding it up. I did see, about a month and a half, two months ago, I did go to the Los Banos website, and I did see the RFP, the Request for Proposal. And I was so excited, but I couldn't wait till the process went through, it got accepted, everything's going well. And so I'm excited for the unsheltered to be sheltered in a situation. Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Ballard, resident of Los Banos. I'd also like to speak on Item Number 11, but after they do their report, because it might answer some of my questions, and I won't have to blindly ask a question. I'd like to hear their presentation first, and then be able to talk like it's been done in the past. I'm also concerned about the, almost a million dollars spent out of the consent agenda, where you guys, you know, pass it all with a wave of your hand. Some of it I've never even heard of before. I don't think there was a presentation, I'm not positive, but if there wasn't, it's something that the public should know about. It shouldn't be something that's just, okay, pass it, we're going to spend it. If the public isn't aware of it. I have two questions. I sent an email also, and have not received a reply. I need to know the update of Scripps Avenue that was torn up by the credit union. I guess they couldn't find the sewer line or the water line or whatever, but they made like three, four slashes across the street that now have sunken, and it's just a mess to go down there. Also in regards to the Deans, that has already been mentioned, when something's going to be done, when it's going to be opened up again? If not, then just let us know, and maybe have Ranchwood put Radcliffe all the way through and do it properly. He has a road there that is going to go through to Mercy Springs. They can put the road in, make it wide enough, and they would have an escape route. Having it go through other areas and the park and everything else, it's just a madhouse. The other thing I want to know is, I'm on the Oversight Committee for Measure H that passed in 2018. I've had two meetings. That's it. I understand COVID took up some of that time, but I've requested to know what was spent prior to a meeting, and I got a check register. I only want to know what was spent from Measure H. I guess I asked it wrong. I'll have to wait to the meeting and then read over the documents, but I figure that many years, it might take me a while. I'd like to get it prior to a meeting, so that I can get the information out of that. Thank you very much.
Just FYI, there's no public forum on Item 11. So if you had questions...
Is this for time?
No, no, there's plenty of time, no, no, no. No, what I'm saying is that the item that you're requesting to discuss, this is your opportunity to do that.
The only reason...
I just wanted to clarify that before you...
Okay. What I'm asking is if I can talk after you give your presentation. Because most likely, all those questions are going to be answered, and I'm going to sit here and ask questions, and then you're going to give the presentation, and they're going to go, oh, well. It just seems redundant for me to ask a question that might be answered in your presentation. That's why they used to have...
Which is why I'm giving you the opportunity to ask it now.
But I don't know what to ask until I hear your presentation. So in other words, you're silencing the citizens of Los Banos. Okay, thank you.
The public forum is meant for the public to speak, which is this opportunity right now before you. Anyone else?
I want to thank everyone for their commitment to Los Banos, for being here tonight. Appreciate your service, all of you. I wrote this out because I wanted to put a lot of thought into it, and I do appreciate the courtesy of everyone listening to this. So Los Banos does have some problems, there's no denying that. Each problem has to be addressed separately. I am here tonight to offer a solution to one of those problems, and that's the overpopulation of dogs and cats. There are innocent animals suffering on almost every block in this town. Many of them are picked up by animal control, sometimes before they get hit by a car, and sometimes after they get hit by a car. If they're picked up after being hit by a car, there is no option for affordable emergency care. And there sometimes is no option for even humanely euthanizing them when that's the only alternative to end their suffering. Once they're picked up and taken to the shelter, then what happens? Do you know? Does anybody know?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not pretty. Animals are wandering around this town every day. Every time I make a trip through town, I think about the street I'm going to turn on. Am I going to see a dog running loose that I'm going to feel like I need to stop and help? If I go that way, will I see it? If I go that way, will I see it? You know, every single time, sorry. These animals are wandering around, hoping that a kind person will take the time to stop and safely catch them without having them run into the street and get hit by the cars that are racing around town all day. These are living, breathing, and feeling animals, and they're hoping that this kind person will give them some food and water, maybe some shelter from the freezing cold or burning heat. The problem with relying on the kindness of these animal lovers is that there are too many animals for the animal lovers to take care of. They're just people who love animals. They're not tax-funded organizations whose sole mission is to care for this overpopulation of animals. They cannot adopt and care for all of these animals. The animal rescue organizations, whose purpose is to help rescue and find homes for animals, have been at maximum capacity for a very long time and cannot take on any more animals. The, sorry, lost my place. Pregnant dogs and cats are literally dumped on the streets by their owners just because they didn't get them spayed or neutered. One dog or cat that is spayed or neutered remains one dog or one cat, not 10, not 12, 24, 36, 48, and so on. As my sign says over there, spay and neuter, or else one equals 1,000 at a minimum. The solution to this problem is to eliminate the overpopulation of cats and dogs by offering Los Banos residents free or extremely low-cost spay and neuter for their pets here in Los Banos. Traveling to the Turlock Spay and Neuter Clinic or the Fresno Hope Foundation is not an option for most Los Banos residents. Not many people can afford to take a day off work to go get their pet fixed. And paying hundreds of dollars to have one animal spayed or neutered is not an option for most Los Banos residents. We need free or affordable services here in Los Banos. Other cities in the Central Valley have implemented programs to reduce the number of unwanted animals using humane methods, such as a trap neuter and release, also known as TNR, and they have had tremendous success. The number of unwanted animals goes down so quickly, it's almost unbelievable. The city of Lindsay is one of those cities. You can read about their story in the Sun Gazette, and just Google "city of Lindsay TNR." Stopping litter after litter of unplanned kittens and unwanted puppies is the first step to a solution. We need to use the funds allotted to the city of Los Banos to start taking the steps needed to solve this problem. I'm asking for you to consider and approve an animal advisory committee comprised of volunteers who have the knowledge and experience to make sure that the $1 million budget and the $50,000 spay and neuter budget is spent appropriately by directly helping animals. That is what the money is intended to do. I do not want those funds spent on hiring outside, out-of-town consulting firms to tell us what Los Banos needs to do. There are people in our community who know what needs to be done. Please allow them to do that. I'd like, I made some copies, I can them out, or would you please pick one up? And whoever would like one.
Good evening. My name is Christine McDonald, and I have been homeowner in Los Banos for 13 years. I'm a pet owner, and I have been involved in animal shelter and rescue work in some capacity since 1992. From 1992 to 1999, I worked at the Humane Society of Santa Clara Valley, which was at the time the largest animal shelter on the West Coast. So I do know what happens when animals get hit by cars and come into an animal shelter. I was actually a euthanasia technician for a few years. And I can tell you the condition these animals are coming in, and sometimes they're required immediate euthanasia, which we don't have in any capacity to do here. I stand before you today to address the critical issue of the growing population of feral cats within our city. I would like to advocate for a dedicated shelter veterinarian and the implementation of a comprehensive spay-neuter program aimed at addressing this challenge effectively. First and foremost, it is crucial to recognize the potential risks associated with feral cats in our community. Feral cats carry zoonotic diseases, which are illnesses that can be transmitted between animals and humans. Some of these diseases include toxoplasmosis, parasites, cat scratch disease, and most dangerously rabies. By implementing a spay-neuter program, which could include vaccines and deworming to combat these health issues, we can significantly reduce the chances of these diseases spreading and protect the health and well-being of our residents. Rabies is not generally an issue in California with domesticated animals due to stringent vaccine laws, but we can apply these, we cannot apply these to unaltered cats. With unchecked reproduction of feral cats, the rabies situation could change quickly. Cats are at risk of exposure to rabies, excuse me, by wildlife. The three species accounting for 99% of rabies cases reported to the California Department of Public Health are bats, skunks, and foxes, all of which are found in and around Los Banos. There's some more information can be found at cdph.ca.gov, and I have the link here, I can give it to you guys when I'm done. Cats are highly prolific breeders, a single female is capable of producing at least two litters each year. This rapid reproduction exacerbates the problem, leading to an ever-increasing population of feral cats. By implementing a spay-neuter program, we can prevent uncontrolled breeding, reducing the number of feral cats over time, and minimize the strain on our resources. Due to the current shortage of veterinarians in Los Banos, with the closure of Pacheco Veterinary Hospital, and the leave of absence by one of the vets at the VCA clinic, veterinarians here are stretched thin. This whole town, as far as I know, is only covered by two doctors in this whole town for all the animals. So that makes spay-neuter services hard to come by. A dedicated shelter veterinarian would be able to address the issues of emergency care of sick and injured shelter animals, and would provide spay and neuter to adopted animals, which they can't really get right now, and as well as alter and vaccinate stray cats. Trap neuter release will naturally reduce the current feral cat problem, since these cats will no longer reproduce and will eventually die off, thus reducing the population over the long run. A comprehensive spay-neuter program is a humane and effective approach to managing the feral cat population. By implementing such a program, we can address the underlying causes of feral cat overpopulation and break the cycle of reproduction. This approach... This approach not only improves the quality of life for these animals, but also helps alleviate the burden on our local animal shelters and reduce the cost of sheltering and the cost in need for euthanasia. In conclusion, a spay-neuter program for feral cats is an essential step toward creating a healthier and safer community. By controlling the spread of zoonotic diseases, mitigating the risk of rabies transmission, and addressing the issue of rapid reproduction, we can make a significant positive impact on our city. I urge the city council to consider hiring a shelter veterinarian and support the implementation of a spay-neuter program, recognizing its potential to improve both human and animal welfare. And as an example-
Hi, my name's Alyssa Homan. I've lived in Los Banos for four years. I'm currently, for the last year, been at 2131 East Pacheco Boulevard in these little apartment complexes by the La Plaza Inn and the Rancho Mobile Home Park. I am here to piggyback on the animal issue. I'm in an apartment where I'm feeding probably 10 to 12 cats, four of whom just had babies. I've been trying to get the babies once they start coming out and walking so that we can get them into rescue, and they have a chance of not being bred over and over. Or another part we don't talk about is just how cruel and inhumane it is because these cats don't live long. Most of the ones that I've seen born don't live long past the walking stage. I've seen them come to my back door with pus covering their whole face, getting sick, they die, or they just keep breeding and breeding. The females that just gave birth maybe six weeks ago, they're getting close to getting in heat again. We recently had Feral Freedom kind of help with some TNR, but Levi, who runs it, is one person out of San Martin. Way, again, way out of town. We desperately need something local. Desperately need TNR, trap and release. We need to vaccinate, spay, neuter, and let them live their lives without being bred over and over for their babies to die or have the same fate. There's another lady who just recently, there was a cat, a kitten, that was hit by a car, and she just had to take it to Turlock because the vets in town are closed. Had to set up a GoFundMe because the treatment is thousands of dollars. And this is a stray cat. This isn't our responsibility. This is the city's pet. So I agree that we need a medical advisory board. Since the shelter's ran by PD, we need some people who are experts in rescue and in the situation. Not that they're doing a bad job. I appreciate their efforts. But we do need some oversight. And we also need a vet to treat these emergency situations and these city animals, and as well to spay-neuter. And for low-income people, because it's unrealistic to expect just rich people to have pets, right? There's such an overpopulation issue. If we just got them spayed and neutered and got them homes, it would really help. So we really need something either free or low-cost just for residents to spay and neuter their pets as well. I think that's it. That's my main points. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jennifer Cabrera, and I've been a resident of Los Banos for nine years. This is my first meeting. And I do want to say I'm coming also because of the whole spay and neuter. When I arrived nine years ago, I remember getting a puppy, and the first thing I remember is knowing that I needed to get it neutered. I went over to the shelter, and they said, yes, bring your dog on this date. You pay $50. They took my dog, and they brought my dog the same day, and I got medication for my dog. That was awesome. My dog never had any puppies, never ran off and got any other dog pregnant. So that was super awesome. Now, nine years later, my brother got a dog. He was gifted a dog. And the first thing I said is, we have to get it neutered. So I called around town, and they said, oh, it's three months away, or it's, we're booked. And so I was like, okay, so we have to get this dog neutered. So I had to take a day off and go over to Turlock and pay Turlock to get the dog spayed and neutered. Now, aside from having to pay them, I did have to take the day off. I took my brother with me because it's a large dog. And we had to spend the entire day in Turlock. And that takes a lot of time. And so I think that's a huge problem. And I really think we do need a spay-neuter program here in Los Banos that's either free or low-cost. Now, not too long ago, actually about last November, I am a real estate agent. Someone called and said, hey, someone abandoned two cats and six kittens. And so what are we to do with those? I've never owned a cat. So I went over to the shelter, and I said, hey, there's these cats with this mom. Sorry, we're full. We can't take them. And so I was like, well, I've never had cats before. And I brought them into my house. I put them in one of the bathrooms. And I was kind of scared of the cats. I've never owned one before. And so, but I bought food along with one of my best friends. We bought food. We bought beds. We bought the litter. We bought everything that the cats needed in order to get bigger. We called around. All the rescues said, we're full, we're full. We ended up finding a rescue in Modesto. Now, the rescue did take the kittens with the cats, one of the cats, the mama cat. But they also wanted a contribution of $500. They wanted a contribution. They wanted $100 for the cat and with the kittens. And so my friend and I, we share that cost. So in total, we spent $1,000 on these cats. Now, people don't have that kind of money. Not everyone has that kind of money. I can't do it every week or every other week, you know? But I can here and there. But at the end of the day, it is the city's responsibility to have a program where we can take these animals and just get them spayed and neutered, you know? And once we get going on that, eventually, we won't have this huge problem having a bunch of strays going everywhere, a bunch of animals reproducing all the time. So the last thing I wanted to say, I went to Walmart not too long ago, and I saw someone with a sign that said, "Free kittens." And I was like, oh, hi. Do you have, you know, you should get your cats spayed and neutered. And sometimes my friend and I, we go to Fresno because she's been trapping and releasing cats for a long time. And I'm very, very new. This world is so new to me. And so I said, hey, you know, if you need help, maybe we could take your cats for you. He said, I have six cats that aren't spayed or neutered. We can't afford it. So I gave him my card, and I said, call me. Maybe we can help you. My friend and I take cats all the time to Fresno as well, to the Hope Foundation. And I just did some quick math real quick. And for one cat that we take, we spent $285 for the day. That includes gas, paying to get it spayed or neutered, and we have to have lunch, right? And we also spend the entire day there. That's also a day of work that I don't go, a day of work that she doesn't go. And we try to take more than one cat. That way, it's worth our trip. So I really, really hope that you guys do consider a spay and neuter program for the city of Los Banos. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
General counsel members and staff, I'm going to change the subject time here tonight. You had a lot of concerns on here, and I think, you know, you've got a job and task ahead of you. Tomorrow's prayer day and stuff on here. I take that in consideration. But my subject matter is the West Side Express newspaper. And so I'm here tonight to publicly express my appreciation for the West Side Express for giving Los Banos a voice for local events, activities, and what's happening in Los Banos. If my memory serves me right, it's been about a year in the making for the entire West Side. As a city of 45,000-plus, this is a much-needed avenue, which not only represents Los Banos, but the entire West Side from Fireball to Gustine. Again, my hat is off to the people who brought back the paper that we can be proud of, as I'm sure each member of the council has already previously expressed. I have, I'm not being paid for this public announcement, nor am I affiliated with the West Side Express. I'm just happy to see that we have a paper on here again that is out to the public on here that they can see what's happening in Los Banos for everyone. That's it. And if I leave, I'm hungry, and my dinner is waiting on here. And you guys have a full night ahead of you, and good luck.
All right.
Hello, mayors, city council, city employees. I'm here representing the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce. I'm a city council. First of all, I'd like to do, say a couple things of encouragement because you guys could probably use it by now. Number one, when schools started, I noticed how all of the crosswalks were painted, like, right on time, just in time for school to start. And I thought that was really great. I've noticed that some of the roads are starting to get stripes and things like that. So that's really good. I have two businesses in town, and my family also owns two houses in all four districts of this town. So I get around a lot because I have to basically go back and forth on Pacheco all the time to see what's going on. So I see everything, okay? Somewhere or another, there's sometimes, there's a 24-hour stores. I'm always doing something. So I see a lot of things that go on. If you ever want to find out what's going on, come see me, okay? All right. I've dealt with all the things you guys are talking about. All right. Another thing. I also noticed that some buildings look like they're getting ready to get painted over there, too, downtown there. We had a good turnout at the Mother's Day in the Park, I'm told. I have the two businesses in town. I was lucky enough to have. Both of them qualify for an incentive trip. And so if you say you can't do business in Los Banos, well, just watch because both of them qualify. There are hundreds of different franchises from here. I'm the southernmost one, all the way up to the Canadian border. And two out of about 300 in that area qualified, and two of them are from Los Banos, all right? And only 30 make it. Pretty good, okay? So that's, I'm just saying. All right. I wish I had could come up here and talk as just Roy one time because I could answer a lot of what they're saying. Let's see. Also, we had our, we participated in the May Day event. You know, I couldn't do anything about the weather. I unfortunately had to be in Costa Rica attending those incentive trips. So that was rough duty. As far as coming up, our biggest one coming up next will be in June. It'll be Dad's Day Out. It'll be in the downtown Sixth Street predominantly. And it's going to be a car show, a street festival. And it'll have all kinds of things for dads and their kids and their moms, too. We don't want to leave them out. And everybody will be represented. There'll be crafts. There'll be really nice cars, things like that going on. It'll be our 10th annual one. Don't be dissuaded by imposters. This one's been going for 10 years. And so that's going to be on June 17th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Other than that, I would, I really would like to get with you folks and go over the work, the volunteer work that my nephew's done on the chamber's website. I think you're going to really like what's going on there. It's, we started with the membership list, and we have, we've set it up to the point where you can link to everybody's social media and et cetera and get that all linked together. And in the interest of time, because just like the fellow said, some of you guys probably haven't ate yet, and you can get on down to business. Thank you very much. Take care.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? No? Regarding the homeless, I definitely hope people stick around as we are going to, item eight on the agenda will be item of discussion. I really wished animal shelter and everything honestly was on my agenda so we could talk about it. But we can't, we can't do that unfortunately tonight. With that, do we have any write-in comments? No comments? All right, thank you. All right. So at this time, I'm going to close the public forum. Let's move into item seven, consideration of approval of the consent agenda.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 238362 through 238843 in the amount of $4,525,875.47. Minutes for the April 19th, 2023 city council meeting. Third quarter investment report for 2022-2023. City Council Resolution Number 6629, authorizing the city manager to execute the amendment number three to the professional services agreement with Mark Thomas &amp; Company, Inc. for engineering services for the Pioneer Road widening project in the amount of $225,718. City Council Resolution Number 6630, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Mark Thomas &amp; Company, Inc. to update the improvement standards and specifications and community design standards in the amount of $580,658. City Council Resolution Number 6631, authorizing a word of contract agreement for the exterior painting of four city-owned buildings to pro-group painting in the amount of $143,767. City Council Resolution Number 6632, accepting public improvements for South Point at Regency Park, Overland Avenue, Developer Stonefield Home, Inc. City Council Resolution Number 6633, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Adart, Inc. for the replacement of the digital signs at the Los Banos Community Center in the amount of $34,909. City Council Resolution Number 6634, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement between the city of Los Banos and Corallo Engineers, Inc. to update the storm drain systems master plan. City Council Resolution Number 6635, approving the restated joint power agreement of the Merced County Association of Governments effective July 19th, 2023, for a term of 30 years. City Council Resolution Number 6636, appointing Stephanie Austin to the Measure P Citizens Oversight Committee with a term ending December 31st, 2023. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right. This time, anyone on the council want to discuss any of the items? If not, do I have a motion? Councilmember Limerick?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consideration of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that, Mayor.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Moving on to item number eight, consideration of approval of City Council Resolution Number 6637, authorizing a joint application and participation in the Home Key Program. And for this, we'll go to Community and Economic Development Director, Susan Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I first want to take the opportunity to introduce our new housing division within the Community and Economic Development Department. We have here tonight Kristi McCammon, she's our new housing program manager. Yes, Kristi, she's done phenomenal work already. She started with us on March 1st, and we've had some great success, and we're hoping tonight, with the approval of the council, that this will be a resource and a tool with Home Key Project that we can use for our housing division. And the next person is Jennifer Loa. Jennifer is our homeless outreach coordinator. Jennifer started just a few weeks ago, actually, in April, right? Yeah. April 17th, yes. So she's just been on board with us, and we appreciate all of her hard work and the division and what they've been doing. I know I've learned a lot from them and us as a community. We, it, it's, there's actually, I, I can't even put words to, to the appreciation of, and the council's foresight to create this division for our community. I, I, all of the concerns that we heard today within the public forum, I think with this division, we will have some of the resources and tools to be able to provide some solutions. So moving through the presentation and through the proposal before you tonight, just a little bit of background on Home Key. The City of Los Banas currently has 113 individuals experiencing homelessness, and this is based on data collected from the pit count. This is the point-in-time count that was conducted in 2023. We had a, a member of our public, Ms. George, with the Elks, that they participated in that event, and that, that is real data, real live data from 2023. There are approximately 20 emergency interim shelter beds available through the Bridge Housing Program, and that's funded from the county of, by the county of Merced and the Merced City and County Continuum of Care. And then we have affordable housing units that are needed in the City of Los Banas for all communities, for all income levels, and especially those experiencing homelessness. So what we see is a lack of units, and in order to be able to successfully provide solutions, we need those units. That's crucial. So council direction, and this was received back in October of 2022, the Los Banas City Council adopted a resolution, Number 6570, authorizing the city's use of the permanent local housing allocation, the PLHA grant. So some of you may recall myself and Chief Breezy coming forward and requesting us to apply. We were awarded this grant, it's through SB2, and the funds are planned to create permanent supportive housing for people experiencing homelessness. And during that meeting, the city council directed staff to proceed forward with a hotel conversion project. And the, the purpose of that, if you may recall, we came forward with two, two paths, with moving forward with the PLHA grant application, and it was, we could do tiny homes, or we could do a hotel conversion. And the direction from the council on that council meeting was to move forward with a hotel conversion project for reasons of efficiency, affordability, and just time. We needed to be able to quickly be able to provide resources and units for the community. So the Home Key Program, the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, through Assembly Bill Number 140, has made $736 million of grant funds for the development of interim emergency shelter for permanent housing and permanent supportive housing for the unhoused. This is unprecedented. The state of California has not had this amount of money available for housing, for these types of housing projects. So our geographical region, the San Joaquin Valley, has $43 million, at over $43 million available for eight counties. Within that region, it's Fresno, Kern, Kings, Madera, Merced, San Joaquin, Stanislaus, and Teleri. We're all competing for that $43 million. There's been three rounds of Home Key, this is the third round that's come out, a notice of funding availability. So the first two, uh, bigger communities, most of the bigger communities in those counties have received funds. So we feel that the timing is just right for Los Banas to be able to potentially get our hands on some of that funding and bring that home to us, and to benefit our community. It is competitive, the grant applications are accepted over the counter, the grant applications, the, the opening to accept those applications was on April 24th, and if a jurisdiction meets the minimum qualifications, the grants will be awarded on a first-come, first-served basis until June 30th, or until those funds are exhausted. And what we see happening, we do expect that those funds will be exhausted before June 30th. We're also expecting, what we're hearing throughout the state is that this will be the last round of Home Key. So this is really potentially our last option, our, our last ability to be able to put our hands on this money and bring that back to our community. The components of the Home Key Program, it just, we wanted to walk you through really what that application and that process would consist of. So we, we would have a grant application, we would need to go through site acquisition and development, we would need to do rehabilitation then, we would go in through with a lead service provider, we would need to have services provided to clients and residents, so we need to have an agreement with the lead service provider. Apartments or property management would need to be, would be done as a part of that. There's going to be compliance and reporting that, that is required under the Home Key Program per HCD, Housing and Community Development, and then there will be a 55-year deed restriction for affordable housing. And that's because, as you can imagine, the state's reason and intent of that is just if they are providing this money, they want to ensure that units remain affordable for residents in the community. So the Home Key Program, the state allows jurisdictions to apply as a sole applicant or as a joint applicant with a non- or for-profit organization. Jurisdictions with limited staff and expertise usually elect, just like Los Banas, to apply with an experienced joint applicant. So on March 24th, the Community and Economic Development Department issued a request for proposal, we issued an RFP, seeking qualified nonprofit or for-profit candidates that could cooperate with the city on a Home Key project. And we conducted an evaluation process, and Shangri-La Industries has been selected as a co-applicant with the city for a Home Key project. Shangri-La Industries is a Los Angeles-based company. They were formed 14 years ago by principles with considerable, considerable, excuse me, experience in the ownership and operation of real estate to address the typical shortcomings experienced in the industry. To date, it is a privately-held, vertically-integrated group of firms focused on excellence in multifamily housing and hospitality facilities. And as the parent corporation of two leading businesses in the California real estate industry, Shangri-La Development and Shangri-La Construction, they deliver across a spectrum of real estate specialties efficiently and cost effectively. So this is their niche, this is what they do, and I'm going to be able to show you some examples of that in a couple of slides. Shangri-La partners with lead service providers, and that's Step Up, to come in with a hands-on, just wrapped-around, nuts-to-soup, as Kristi says, just approach to their program. To date, the team has over 1,400 permanently supportive housing units, so permanent supportive housing units combined, so between Shangri-La and Step Up. Step Up has provided supportive services for 27 permanent supportive housing properties, and Step Up has provided property management for 20 permanent supportive housing properties. So between the experience of Shangri-La and their, and Step Up, we feel that the City of Los Banas, we would have a, a great opportunity for a relationship and partnership with those two organizations combined. So Shangri-La with SLI, Step Up, has been awarded seven projects in Home Key's Rounds One and Two. So they have effectively creative projects within different communities through Home Key, so they know exactly what they're doing. The one thing about Home Key that makes it a little bit different in its, its funding is that it's aggressive. The state of California wants to see these units created as quickly as possible, and that timeline is extremely aggressive. So to be able to do it, you need to have an experienced co-applicant, so somebody who knows what they're doing, to be able to partner with the city to, to effectively create those units. And the most effective way to do that is to take an existing building and do a conversion. So this is an example, these are some examples that Shangri-La has throughout the state of California. One of the examples, the picture to the, the left top-hand corner, if you can see my cursor, it's, it's this building here, that's a hotel conversion. And this example is from Redland, California, Redlands. They converted a motel into 100 units of permanent supportive housing in four months. Redlands mode, model shows that this is an opportunity to take a facility that has already been built, it has the infrastructure in place, and then it has an opportunity to take that facility that might be blighted, might be a nuisance within the community, and convert it into something that can be put to good use. So we're seeing that potentially we have an opportunity to do that through our community. Within a project that would be brought forward, it would have 24/7 security, it would have an onsite property manager that would live there at the facility, it would have a lead service provider there daily. This has, through what we've seen with other communities that have been able to utilize Home Key funds, we have seen data that shows that there's been calls of service reduced after a Home Key project, and it creates efficiency for, for public safety. As you can imagine, instead of being spread thin throughout the community answering calls, they can effectively go to one centralized location. So this just shows the experience of Shangri-La and what they do. These are after pictures, we didn't have enough room to show you the before pictures, but you would be just wowed what these facilities, what these hotels looked like before the conversion. So this is Redlands, like I said, this unit here with the client is real-life experience, that's a Redlands example. This at the right-hand corner is from Los Angeles. Down on the bottom, this is King City, and then these two pictures, this is from San Bernardino, and this is a unit inside of this complex, makes it look like a little boutique, I know, looking at these examples, it makes it look like a boutique hotel. They really, their goal, Shangri-La's goal is to amplify and, and create a, a nice project, but to enhance so that the community has something to be proud of. So, so those are just some examples, and as a part of this, actually, I do want to go back to the next slide, the back slide, just on Shangri-La, I do want to take a moment to speak about the vetting process that the state requires with Home Key. So it's not just a, a process, and I do want to, to really, to drive this home, that it's, it's not just the city evaluating a co-applicant and saying, hey, we, we want to do a project with these folks because they've done other projects in the state. The state goes through their own vetting process as well, and so they evaluate solvency for those co-occupants, applicants, excuse me, for viability. They, and you can see the purpose of the state in doing this is so that if they are going to be granting this money, millions of dollars, they are going, going to want to ensure that their investment is solid and sustainable. So Shangri-La has a proven solvency and viability through seven projects that they've provided through Home Key, and that's just Home Key, they have other projects through other funding sources as well. They as well have a project just right over the hill in Salinas, so if, if ever anyone wants, if any of the council would like to take a field trip, I'm sure we can facilitate that, if you'd like to ever go and see what a project just over the hill looks like in, in our backyard. So next steps, the City of Los Banas and Shangri-La would enter into a MOU detailing relationship and responsibilities. So this is, the roles and responsibilities would be outlined, who is responsible for what. The part of Home Key, the, the city's involvement is really more of a pass-through entity for the funding to the co-applicant. So the state of California doesn't directly give that funding to a nonprofit or for-profit organization, they pass it through the city, and the city ensures that that project is meeting the criteria and really the, the regulations, the agreement that the state of California has put into place. Then the city works with Shangri-La to submit a grant application to the state, and hopefully the state would award the Home Key grant to us, and that is granted though, that the council would give us permission tonight to move forward with an application. And then the City of Los Banas and Shangri-La would enter into a standard agreement with the California Housing and Community Development Agency, HCD. So with that, staff is recommending and requesting the adoption of Resolution Number 6637, authorizing a joint application and participation in the Home Key program. I have Kristi, who has gone to Home Key conferences provided by HCD, so she can provide help with any answer or questions that might stump me, but hopefully this presentation was thorough enough to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for that. I'll open it up to council members for questions. No questions? So I just, real quick, I, I do have one, the number of anticipated beds for the facility, what, what are we looking at?
So based on the facility that would be selected, so based on the hotel conversion, we're looking about 50 units, I think would be the sweet spot, 40, oh, 70? 57. 57 would be the, where we would like to be with that. And if, looking at our, our pit count, 113 unhoused individuals, that would be a huge shot in the arm for us to provide units.
Okay. And, and, you know, just, again, related to the topic, I didn't, I didn't take this job because I want everybody to tell me how great it, it's going. I would much rather hear the public forum of the problems, because that's how we can get to the root of things. I'm very well aware of the homeless issue, I mean, that's why I wanted to get in here. And so just to educate people on a couple of things, one, there's a federal case law with Boise, which regards the homeless, which means that cities, any city in the United States cannot move, arrest, remove, do anything with the homeless until you have a number of beds available that exceeds the number of your documented homeless. And so that's really been kind of handcuffing cities everywhere regarding this issue, so we can, you know, shut down certain city properties, but that doesn't mean we can dictate where they go. They would still be free to, to move about and do things. With that being said, you know, I think this is, I agree it is, it's a great plan to start. You know, my only concern is that just because we put a roof over somebody's head does not make them a productive member of society, right? And so I'm hoping that in this RFP, there's some sort of like program-based discussions of, of what we want to accomplish. And I know I've talked with our city manager about, you know, how do we get to 113 beds? Because at 113 beds, we can then change the municipal code and actually provide some real consequences for people that don't want the support, that don't want the resources. Because again, just my opinion, if you're here to set things on fire and smoke meth, I want to make your life as miserable as possible for choosing Los Banas, and I want to protect our citizens who should be able to walk down any pathway in our city. So I think 57 is a great start, especially if the state's gonna, gonna help us pay for it, but then we gotta, we gotta make the next plan for that, so. Anyone have anything? No? All right. Do I have a, a motion? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve Resolution Number 6637.
All right, do I have a second? Councilmember Begonia?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you for that, Stacy. All right. Let's move into item nine, acceptance of grant deeds from the Los Banas Designated Local Authority, DLA, as successor agency to the as successor agency to the former Los Banas Redevelopment Agency, RDA, to the city of Los Banas. For this, we'll go to City Attorney Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the public. We've been working on this project since the summer of 2021. During that time, the city has accepted 15 properties from the DLA, which is the designated local authority, the successor to the former Los Banas Redevelopment Agency. Those 15 properties we've accepted thus far primarily along the rail trail after they have been remediated from arsenic related issues as a result of the use of that rail trail as a railroad, actually. And so these, on the on the board, you can see are the final two parcels that the DLA has and are offering to transfer to the city for future development. Both of them are frontage onto H Street, that long parcel to the east. We we own, we own, the city, the city already has property to the north of that property. So this would be a very good addition to that in order to come up with a development for that block. And that property, however, and the property to the west, which is a different sort of property, are both arsenic, have some arsenic issues that have been remediated to a level that will allow for commercial development but not residential development. If any residential development were to happen on those parcels, the development would have to reme- Now. Yeah. Okay, so these two parcels are a good addition. The parcel to the west is the old railroad loading dock. Right now, it's developed with a concrete loading dock. And you can, from this picture, you can kind of see there's still a railroad line that leads to that loading dock. It's not being used currently. The rest of the parcel is asphalted. So that parcel has, both of these parcels have received clearance from the Department of Water Resources in terms of clean closure, as long as, but they are encumbered with a land use covenant that does not allow for any residential development on either parcel. Like all of the other parcels primarily that we have accepted in the past, most of them have land use covenants that are very similar. So tonight, we're bringing to you these two parcels. The administrator of the DLA brought these parcels forward, I believe, at the beginning of the year. The city indicated interest in the parcels. And so they have gone through the effort of having them remediated to that level that I just mentioned. And they're now offering them for transfer to the city for future development. So I'm requesting that you consider approval of resolution number 6638 and 6639, which would accept those parcels. They will be the final two parcels from the DLA. And we'll have now a total of 17 parcels that have been transferred to the city from the former redevelopment agency. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
All right, questions from the council? Do I have a motion? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution number 6638 as submitted.
Thank you, Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? No? All right, and moving on to item 9B, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution number 6639 as submitted.
Thank you, and do I have a second? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you, all those in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes. All right, let's move on to item number 10, consideration of approval of City Council Resolution number 6640, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Ronnie's, Inc. to provide landscape maintenance services for the city of Los Banas. For this, we'll go to Public Works Director, City Engineer, Tan.
Good evening, mayors. So tonight, I will actually have Mr. Joe Heim, our Parks and Recreation Operations Managers, kind of take over the lead on here, and I'll will be standing back as support for any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Actually, returning with this item from the fall, we had a prior bid process and went back out with different direction for services, primarily due to the intention to create financial stability for the districts as well as our general fund. So tonight, I'm talking about the landscape maintenance services. This is our services for our planters, rightaways, parks, those those locations, and it's our routine services for that. Sorry, can't quite read that here in the white, but it kind of goes over the overview of the presentation. We'll talk about the contract overview, all the way through funding sources and the RFP results and our recommendation. So the landscape maintenance services contract, the history of it is we transitioned from internal city staff to contracted services. We've had the current agreement since 2014 with some extensions in there. We have gone the route of contracting for a number of benefits, including the financial efficiency of it and to provide beautification and overall enhancement of the community, as well as to maintain our assets in the in the landscape areas to a safe and usable standard. So our landscape locations, there's three real areas that we break them down. So as part of this RFP, we are, we've separated parks, which includes residential park facilities, things like that, fire station, city hall, community center, were also included in there. That's primarily to ensure they receive sufficient services, as well as planters, including medians, rightaways, wall planters, trails, landscape surrounding facilities. So think smaller planters. And then our third, we added this complexes, so Seventh Street Ballpark, Ag Sports Complex, Colorado Ballpark, and Olivera Park. These facilities, we felt required a little bit more frequency in terms of their service levels. Funding sources, so the the contract will be based off the location. So we have general fund locations such as Big Page Park or Ag Sports Complex. You can see Henry Miller Plaza here. We also have locations in the lighting and landscape districts. So we have 18 total lighting and landscape districts. And these districts pay for everything from capital improvements to this contract, as well as fleets, a number of other streetlights, and a number of other areas. So this is a most recent map of the LD districts. You can see the white is the general fund areas, so where city hall is here. And you can see most of the new developments do have, are located in districts. There are some somewhat recent construction in general fund areas, such as the dog park at Ag Sports Complex, are going back about 15, 20 years. The Henry Miller Plaza was in addition to the general fund. So our 2023 maintenance services RFP, so again, we went out last fall. We did have some slightly different scope to this, that RFP. This RFP has a five year contract, and that is anticipated to begin on July 1, 2023. This contract does include a monthly schedule and inspections provided by the contractor to city staff. The contractor will have to employ an inspector, and those inspections will be provided to city staff. So we'll have data and information regarding route work from irrigation schedules to conditions of the parks and areas that need to be addressed. Landscape maintenance services and irrigation maintenance services are the main division between the services that we're requesting. So landscape maintenance services includes mowing, edging, open space and playground surfaces, such as weed control, paved surfaces, weed controls, shrub care and ground cover care. Our irrigation maintenance services include operating, maintaining, repairing and controlling all irrigation, water being delivered during non-use hours, preventative system checks monthly, as well as repairs are to be made within 24 hours of notification. Service frequency does vary based on the location type. Complexes receive landscape maintenance once weekly year round. Park and planter locations receive landscape maintenance once every two weeks from November to February, which is a low grow season, as well as once weekly from March to October during the high grow season. Complex and park locations receive year round weekly irrigation maintenance, and planter locations receive once every two weeks service from November through February and once weekly through March through October. We also added two alternate bid items, which we are recommending to add for these locations. So it is, the alternate bid items were in, once annual overseed of park and complex locations, so turf areas overseeding that in the winter, as well as biannual, twice annual fertilization to parks and complexes, to turf areas in those those locations. So the results of the RFP, where we did, we did receive four proposals. Unfortunately, two of the proposals didn't meet the minimum requirements of the RFP. And we had a selection panel review of the proposals and score them. Ronnie's, Inc. did score the highest in both the fee schedule as well as the proposal itself. Let's go through some of the numbers real quick. The Ronnie's had a base bid of $682,049. Bright View proposed $748,000. And then with, included with the alternate bid services, which we are recommending to do, is Ronnie's provided a $753,997.36 bid, as while Bright View provided a proposal of $923,972.88. The current contract for reference is $556,755. We were anticipating an increase. Again, this is a contract that goes back to 2014. I believe there's been two CPI increases, about 3% in that time. But as you know, we have had substantially higher inflation since 2014. So this represents a $34,000 increase to general funding expenditures, as well as $197,000 increase to the districts, all 18 districts. Going through the financial evaluation, the districts is is our primary concern because we want to make those as sustainable as possible. We we already anticipated districts 11, 12, and 15 to be in deficit, and that would be how it would remain. District 19 is coming out of deficit, and that would remain with with this contract. And District 11 and 12 are the districts that are limited by 5% increases, unfortunately. So variables and just things to to consider with this. I talked about this in the fall presentation. But we want to consider assessment increases. Every district can have an assessment increase, as well as expanses of, expansion of services and associated expenses, future park services or street services, things like that. We want to consider that there might be potential additions to parcel, to the to the districts, which may create extra revenue. We want to consider the replacement of large projects, so playground replacements, storm drain improvements, things like that. We also want to consider the transition of landscape types and to drought tolerant landscape. And we want to consider the expansion of services in terms of charge outs for staff labor for the parks division. So those are some of the things that we wanted to to look at as far as ensuring that this was a sustainable plan for our lighting and landscape districts. So our recommendation tonight is to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Ronnie's, Inc. to provide landscape services to this, to city owned landscape. And if approved, we would authorize this this contract to begin July 1, at which point we would also begin scheduling those alternate bid items, such as the overseeding and the fertilization. And ready for any questions that council may have?
All right, questions from council? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, hey, thank you, Mr. Heim. Question, so actually not a question, more of a statement. The number one complaint that I hear about the the grass mowing during the summer months is the mulch that's left behind. Is there a way we can do without that?
So that was one of the items that we discussed with with the contractor at our meeting. In, built into the the RFP is a request to have the contractor pick up that mulch. If it can be spread, then we will allow it to remain in order to create a healthier turf. But it needs to be spread, and that's one of the things that we'll definitely be identifying as part of the inspection process. I want to be able to have information, if they're stating that that mulch has been spread, and and I'm getting reports that it's not, then that's going to be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? I've had the exact same question, so yes, thank you for that. And the fact that, you know, you've considered an inspection process, and and I want to thank you and Niran for doing such a comprehensive dig into this, so so thank you for that. All right, so do we have a motion? Councilmember Begonia?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 6640 as submitted.
Thank you, and do I have a second? Oh, Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? No? All right, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, I'd like to thank our staff as well. Niran, Brenton, Stacy's out on our panel, as well as Mr. Vaughn helping with the contract and our our public work staff. Thank you.
Total team effort. All right, moving on to item 11, consideration of approval of City Council Resolution number 6641, approving the design information bulletin 23-01 interim standards for typical street sections ST-1 and sidewalk, curb, and gutter sections ST-6. And for this, we'll go go back to our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you again for bearing with us here with quite a bit of an item on the agenda. This one's actually quite interesting, is since I have started with the city now for over years, that really the first month I have started is people are inviting me to go and drive out in all the neighborhood, especially all the new development around town. Some of the concern has always been, why is our road so narrow? And, you know, what is our standards like, and why is it like that in comparison to other towns? So I wanted to bring an item to you tonight for considerations to adopt an interim standard that would address some of those concerns, also to provide you some informations in regards to our current process in adopting a new standard, a comprehensive standard for our our roads and right away informations. So again, we'll go through a little bit of the background of how those things were established, and then I will go and break down all the discussion because there's going to be four main items that we're going to talk about today is the road with itself, the sidewalk sections, as well as bicycle infrastructures, and also parallel parking or on-street parking standards. So the purpose of this is to introduce a new process. This is called a design information bulletin. This is a process that the state uses very frequently in introducing interim standards or temporary standard while they are working on a more comprehensive update to our our cities, to our, the state standards. Our current city standard plan specification was last adopted in 2004. So it's been quite some time, and it has, you know, throughout that, you know, you have seen a lot of updates to the state law in regards to as fire access, emergency respond, as well as to ADA access. So what we are hoping to do today is introducing this DIB or design information bulletins to adopt an interim standard while we go through those comprehensive review in a public forums. So again, the the interim standard tonight is going to talk about the road width, the sidewalk width, the overall right away itself for the city public street, the bicycle infrastructures, as well as on-street parking. So the first item is the road width. Our current city standards has a minimum requirement for various classification of roads. It's residential, local residential streets, collector, arterials, private roads, as well as majors, arterials and expressway. The biggest one we want to focus on tonight is our local residential street. Currently, in our standards, the local residential street has a total width from face to curb to face to curb as 32 feet, with a total right away width of 52 feet. So if you can do the math from the face of curb to face of curb, really, that's only provide a seven foot parking, parallel parking or on-street parking width, and a nine foot travel lane. This is a really create quite a challenging route when you try and travel both directions. So what this creates is what we call a yield street scenarios, where if there's two cars traveling in opposite direction, one has to yield to the other. Especially in Los Banos, it is even even more prevalent because, you know, the high numbers of pickup trucks and stuff that we have in town, and also creating issues for bigger vehicle like our trash pickup, trash vehicle, school buses, as well as emergency vehicle. So what we are asking you tonight to consider is an increase of four foot overall to that roadway width, to bring it from 32 to a 36. The fire codes in California is actually dictate that the fire access route has to be a minimum 20 feet, clear minimum 20 feet. And that's why we're asking you to provide an additional four feet because that create a 10 foot travel lane on each direction for a total of 20 feet for all emergency vehicles, especially for fire apparatus, to be able to safely access those those street. Second, you know, we look at multiple different standard, ASHTO's and NACTO being the very prevalent standard that every cities are using, is that in order to facilitate traffic calming and also a smooth transitions or transportation systems, there really is need to be a 10 foot minimum for travel way. And that's why for tonight, we're hoping that- So that's why for tonight, we're hoping that you would consider bumping that standard from a 32 foot to a 36 foot right-of-way. So and then this kind of just show you the cross-sections of what I'm talking about. The 32 foot is item B on that picture's there. And then the overall width is item A, which I'll get to on the next few slide. Okay. The next item is a sidewalk width. So again, currently we have standards detailed ST-6 in our current standards that dictate how wide sidewalk infrastructures need to be. Currently, we have a minimum width of five feet for when a sidewalk is continuous to a curb. So as you see, what we call it a monolithic sidewalk, so the sidewalk that doesn't have park strips. So currently, our standard is called for a minimum five-foot width. And then where at locations where there is a park strip separating the sidewalk from the curb, those sidewalk width is actually four foot. We look at multiple different standards and have find that, you know, especially with the states encouraging us to consider complete streets for the comfort for pedestrian as well as looking at ADA requirements, there is a really huge push to have a minimum sidewalk width to five feet. So in an ADA standard that the public right-of-way accessibility guideline, they're actually requiring every 100 foot or so, the sidewalk width have to be bumped to a minimum five feet anyway, so that wheelchair can pass each other. So we are proposing to make that five feet everywhere. That's a minimum for a sidewalk that is integral with the curb, so the one with no park strip. And then for sidewalk, I apologize, that for the, the one with the park strip. For a location where there is no park strip, where the pedestrian are walking right next to vehicles, right next to kind of a travel lane, we are proposing for six feet. That's really to address a lot of dooring problems. So sometimes when you have parallel parking, people's opening their doors and stuff like that, it really take a huge chunks off of the sidewalk itself. And it really create a sense of, a perceived sense of unsafe, you know, when you're walking right next to a road and you only really have a very small or skinny sidewalk to walk on. So this is the current standards as it stand. So again, we are asking to increase the sidewalk width from four foot to five foot for area where there is park strip and then to increase the sidewalk width from a five foot to a six foot where there is no park strip. So as we're talking about complete street, we also have to consider not just pedestrians and vehicle, but also bicyclists. In our general plan that recently adopted the General Plan 2042, we do have a various number of policy, policy CP, C-P 4.1 through C-P 4.4 required for us to consider bicycle facility for all new infrastructures that are coming into town. In the mass, in the general plan itself, there's also identified circulation routes to build upon our existing systems and to really consider those bike facility for collector and arterial streets to provide connection throughout different land use within our city. We currently have a bicycle and pedestrian master plan. However, what's that plan is it's lacking the requirements, the implementations to developers to, to asking for those facility. So what we're asking for you tonight is to consider identifying those facility on those collector and arterial street and also establishing standard for the width for those bicycle facility. Because in many times, you've probably seen that in some developments at our city and sometime outside of city, you've seen a very small width bicycle lane that is put right next to a curb and gutter. It's very difficult to ride a bike on a curb and gutter, and then you end up with only a foot or two of asphalt and it's really create an uneven surface for bicyclists. So that's why for tonight, I want you, I was requested, would like to request council to consider a various width depend on the road type. One being a four-foot width for collector street. So collector streets typically a little bit, it has higher traffic volume than a local residential street, but it's not as much as a arterial. So a collector street, an example for us would be something like Seven Streets or Stonewood. That would be a collector street. So for those kind of mid-volumes roads, not too much of high speed, it's usually about 30 miles to 35 miles an hour max. We would like to see a minimums of four-foot bicycle width, and that is to, to create that safe environment for bicyclists to be able to get around town. And then for arterial street where there are higher volumes, a higher speed, we're asking to provide a minimums of five-foot bicycle, bicycle lane for those facility. In our general plan, we've already identified the bicycles circulations through towns. The solid lines are the existing facility and the dash lines are the future facility. So they ask those future facility coming in, we would like to introduce this standard so that we have a more comfortable and safe bicycle circulations in the city. Okay. So with both of those, the road width, the sidewalk width, as well as the bicycle lane, it really then pushes us to really consider the total right-of-way width that the city have to consider. So with all of those additional feet for, again, four foot for the, for the roadway width itself, plus an additional foot on each side for the sidewalk, we really need to increase our, our total right-of-way width from 52 to a 58. So that is on, on the agenda for tonight. Secondly, is that in many cities, one thing that get neglected many time is the on-street parking itself. You know, that's a lot of time, if you've seen, it's served as a very needed amenity for our residents. A lot of our, our residents, our commuters, they have more than one or two vehicles, so they ended up having to park on the streets. So really, we want to, to have a minimum standard for on-street parking, and that's eight feet, eight feet. If you've seen our typical residential sedans and whatnot, they are coming at around eight feet already. So our current standard of seven feet is really lacking on providing those sufficient width. So again, so thank you for, for your time tonight. So staff is recommending for our city council to adopt a resolution approving this Design Information Bulletin Number 23-01 to adopt this interim standard for a typical street sections and a sidewalk curb and gutter sections. Again, this is an interim's standard. We are, tonight, you just, thank you for awarding the contract to Mark Thomas. We are starting a comprehensive update to our standard plan and specification. That will go through all the, the various public forums to address everything from the roads, sidewalks, down to the actual utility portion, water, sewers, storms, and also looking at landscaping standards and tree standards. That is coming up. It is going to take a little bit of time as we have to go through all the various commissions, committee, as well as public forum and stakeholder meeting with developer to get all those feedback before we adopt a fully comprehensive standard. This interim standard has gone through the traffic safety committees on April 14th and the planning commissions on April 26th. Both committee and commissions have provided a unanimous support in adopting this interim standard. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Niron. Just a quick question. You actually, you just kind of answered a little bit of my question, when will this actually take effect? But another thing is, the council and the commission, actually, when, when these developers bring their plans to the, to their meeting, we have, I mean, we have the right to say, no, no, let's take it, let's go draw the, let's go back to the drawing book. For example, back behind Target, there's areas out there, the fire department just suffered trying to get back there. So it's us up here as the council also, when we see that we need to pay attention to when they try to bring these plans to us also. But with this, this right here with this standard, they're going to have to follow our standard now, right? Now at this time. So in the past, we still had a standard that was like, the standard that you show us that we're properly in right now does not meet the standard that they built over there behind Target. From what I can understand, I see back there.
Yeah, that the standards for the stuff behind Target current, currently meet the current standard, this one's going to supersede that. It's going to create a wider road.
That one just barely meets the standard, right? Because I know there's places down there, you can't even get a fire truck back there. But we, as a council, we need to pay more attention to that before we ever, I mean, when it comes to us, you know, with the standard, and hopefully we pass this and hopefully it's in a timely manner, maybe they got time to change their plans or on any future project are coming.
Yeah, for clarification, so for any new project that has not submitted yet, then this standard will apply. For project that already been submitted and been deemed complete, those ones unfortunately will still have to follow our previous standards. Yeah, but, but to your point, it is, you know, the planning commissions, a lot of this go through planning commission to a vested tenor map process and whatnot. They do have discretionary to evaluate projects and looking at, you know, standards and stuff like that. However, it's very difficult when you are trying to impose something that is over and beyond our current standard. That's why making this a minimum standard will go a long way for us asking those from our developer.
No, I totally agree. And I think we should have had it a long time ago. For developer, it's all about putting more homes instead of less homes because the, you know, keeping the road safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Niron. Appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Niron, just a couple of, couple of things here. I know you have some class bike lane standards here. For me, I probably would have been able to visualize it a little bit more if you had some samples of what those lanes look like rather than just the draw here. And, and I know this is a stopgap for, you know, possible applications that may be coming through, but I'm not quite sure, you know, a class two or class three bike lane, what it's going to look like, you know, in a photo type situation. So that would have helped me be able to make a better decision. Couple of other things, public landscaping, where you have the sidewalk, the public landscape sidewalk, and then the private property. Is it going to be futuristic that this council will probably be looking at doing away with the, the public landscaping? Because I'm, I'm hearing that for a lot of residents who are buying homes, we have the public mow strip landscaping, they don't feel it's their responsibility to take care of and that it's the city's responsibility. So that, that would seem to be an opportunity to widen a sidewalk to allow people to pass by and also having driveways where we don't have the dip and just a straight, flat driveway with a roll curb so that it's easier on people for walking, especially seniors and also people who are handicapped in wheelchairs. I see them riding in the street all the time, which is not safe for them. So that's something I'm hoping that we're going to consider in the future. So those are, those are the things, you know, that I'd like to bring up. And I'm hoping in the more comprehensive landscape design that some of these things will be considered. But I do hope that in the future, when we're doing these stopgaps or things that, you know, need some immediate passing, that we have more visual samples of what it is that you're asking us to present. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, just, I'm just going to echo that I live on one of the streets that if somebody parks behind me, I can't get out of my own driveway. And I'm currently teaching a teenager to drive, and she thinks we live on a homey street. So I'm very much appreciative of what you're doing and, and the design standards that you're setting forth. So, so long overdue. Thank you. All right. Moving on to, moving on to item 12, or actually, no, we need a, we need a motion. I'm sorry. Yes. Somebody make a motion on number 11. I got, I got stuck on student driver training in my head for a minute. Yeah, Councilmember Begonia?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6641 as submitted.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Councilmember Lambert?
Mayor, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to item 12, advisement of public notices. We have four reports for this. We'll go to Community and Economic Development Director, Suzelle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item is a mobile food vendor permit for Ariely Jimenez Velasco doing business as Aries Ice Cream. She's proposing to vend within the public right-of-way as an ice cream truck throughout the city. The second is another mobile food vendor for Anna Karen Ordunas doing business as Marisco's El Agua Chilena's. Also proposing to vend within the public right-of-way. And we have a site plan review and conditional use permit. This is for a project located on West Pacheco Boulevard. It's the property where the Old World Fair Building is located, so west of Walmart. The proposal is for a boat and RV storage, a premier boat and RV storage facility. Then the last item is for a conditional use permit for a type 21 alcohol license. And this is for Beverage House located at 547 West I Street. This is, that was formerly the Circle K that's right across the street from the hospital. Those public hearings will be held on Wednesday, May 24th at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item 13, City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report, the mayor and I, last week, we had the privilege of going on over to Washington DC. It's a trip that is organized with the Merced County Association of Governments called the One Voice Trip. And we were over there and we were able to meet with different federal agencies. So we met with the Department of Homeland Security, FEMA, United States Department Agriculture, EPA. Were able to get some face time with Senator Padilla's office, Senator Dianne Feinstein's office, Congressman Duarte's office. We had quite a bit of face time and his representative here today. So thank you for that. Got to meet your fellow colleagues in Washington. It was really nice to meet them. So it was a really good, good trip, really quite, quite fruitful. And I just want to say thank you to the mayor for going last year. I went by myself and it was really nice to have the mayor go with me and us go together. We're able to just, you know, share ideas and collaborate. And on one day, we were able, we were broken up into two different groups. So he was able to go to one group and conversate and lobby for our projects that we went there to talk about, which was funding for Pioneer Trail, the airport, and for EOC station, fire station. And then he went on his group, I went on my group. And so felt the conversations were quite fruitful, got some good contacts. As soon as I finished up with the meetings, I was immediately following up with those folks, sending them hellos and, you know, starting that chain of communication. So it was really good to have that there. And actually, since I've been back, I've already been reaching out with some folks in Washington about the projects that we went over there with and trying to create some conversations. So thank you, Mayor, for going. And it was a really good trip and just look forward to try to make some progress on those big projects for us as a city. Thank you.
All right. And next item is item 14, report update Merced County Association of Governments, Peninsula Clean Energy Measure V Committee, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and Los Bannas Downtown Property and Business Improvement. So we'll start with Councilmember Lewis for San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control.
Well, just a couple of announcements. There's still money available out there for people who want to transition from their wood burning fireplace to either gas or electric. And I suggest that if people are interested in converting to a gas fireplace, to try to do that as quickly as possible because it looks like carbs through the state of California is going to at some point do away with that and force everybody to go to electrical. So again, there's still monies available for conversion of your wood burning fireplace to either gas or electric. And on, we have a free smog repair event in Merced coming up for people who are having trouble passing smog and registration. They will be able to get up to $500 for free smog repairs. The event will be held this year at the Merced County Fairground at 900 Martin Luther King Boulevard on Saturday, June 24th between 8:00 AM and 12:00 PM. And anticipate at least a two-hour wait time. The gates will probably be opening at 6:30 AM in the morning. No diesel vehicles will be allowed. And the event will also follow strict, strict state COVID guidelines to participate for social distancing and sanitary protocol. So the last time we had this event was, I believe, almost two years ago, and it was here in Los Bannas at the fairground. But this year, it's going to be in Merced. And again, that's going to be on June 24th, 2023. A couple of other things. This, this agenda tonight was the first one that I've seen in 10 years where we didn't have any public participation. So I'm hoping, Mayor, that some of these things, some of the items that are on the agenda, we can allow public to speak, especially like items 10 through 14, 10 through, I'm sorry, items nine through 11. I believe you have the authority to allow public to speak if, if they have some questions they'd like to ask. Also, I know that our FYI, our fiscal budget is coming up here for approval. It has to be approved by June 1st or at the end of, at the end of June for the fiscal year, July 2023, 24. Annually, we have a budget workshop, Mr. Mayor, so that council can ask questions about the budget. I'm hoping that we're going to have one coming up here pretty quickly because, again, that budget has to be approved by the first of the fiscal year. So it's traditional that we have a budget workshop so that we can ask questions about, you know, why is this here or how much money is in any particular budgeted area for each department? Also, I, I know that we had a really rough winter this year and a lot of our streets are in disrepair. The street you live on is really bad. The street you live on is really bad, and there, it's not just in the southern area, but in the northern part of our city as well. And I, I would like to see if we could maybe have our Public Works Director give us a report and an update on perhaps when we're looking at some repair work being started on our streets. I'm hearing from people in the community who are really upset about some of the streets that they live on. So it would be nice to have a Public Works update on when repairs are going to start. I know there was a list out there, and I had it on in my emails, but somehow or other it disappeared when we were supposed to be starting. I think it was in two thousand twenty-one on street repairs. But I realize that COVID probably set a lot of that aside, and things went awry. But, you know, we're, we're in pretty bad shape with some of our streets right now that need repair. And just kind of lastly, I think it was back in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, I can't remember exactly, when I was working with our police department on the new animal control laws in our city. One of the things that was really important for me, and I'm hoping if this committee develops, is education to our community. Education is really important. We, we did one session in the public schools, at an elementary in the public schools. And I think something like that, if this committee and our police department could get together and work with our superintendent and the school board to allow people to go in on a regular basis, to be able to educate our children about spaying and neutering, and, you know, carrying waste bags. I rarely see anybody in our community carry waste bags. And when I walk my dogs, I see waste all over the place because people just, that's the way people are now. So it's, it's education, it starts with education. And I applaud you for thinking of the things that we need. But until people understand why they shouldn't do what they do, it, it will continue. It'll really be hard to get a grasp on it. And children are notorious for bringing home a message to their families to say, no, Mom, we can't do that, no, Dad, you can't do that, you got to do it this way. So it's a good way of starting the process. Perhaps in our city, we can do some mailers in our utility bills about spaying and neutering and the importance of it, and, you know, the education of, you know, carrying your waste product with you when you're walking your dog. So I just wanted to add that, and I applaud the, the community who came out today and spoke about their concerns. It is a big problem. And I know we had it back when we had the fall of our economy back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, where people were leaving the city en masse and were losing their homes and abandoning their animals all over the community, and it hasn't stopped since then. So thank you to the community for coming out and speaking tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Regarding MCAG, just a couple of things. Some of the last meetings, I know it's been a month since we had a city council meeting, but one of the things that was brought to our attentions, the tipping fees at our landfills for our dumps. Los Manos paid the highest dollar amount of tipping fees in the entire county, even though we're not the biggest city, we're not even the biggest jurisdiction, we're number three. So one of the things that was voted on was to normalize those rates, so everybody's going to pay the same, because let's be honest, garbage doesn't care where it comes from. And so Los Manos will no longer pay the, the highest rates anymore. And so that's, that's, that's kind of a win for us. Also with MCAG, I did go to Washington DC, and that was, that was fantastic to have that opportunity to get some face time with representatives. I met with the Department of Justice and FEMA, and we went to the White House property and discussed some things with Los Manos, how we're a very unique city and some of the unique challenges we have. And so, you know, our, our taxes pay, go to federal income taxes, so we're trying our best to bring some back, and so we can put them to some projects here. So that's, that's pretty much all I had, do you have anything for?
Not to add comments up there, Bill.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, and then moving on to item fifteen, City Council Members Report. Start with Councilmember Begonia.
I had the opportunity to go to Mother's Day in the Park, as I usually do on Saturday, and I'll just, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce and congratulate them on a successful event. And thank you to everybody who donated their time, entertainment, their equipment to make that possible. As well as, it's nice to see all the small business owners out there and people out there supporting them. So that's it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Jones?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis, did you get, okay, and Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you guys for coming out for the animal control. I actually wrote down a little statement here, she actually started off with it, and I won't take with just a second, because I'm getting a little hungry myself. But the only way to start at the root of the problem is just like what she said, was to educate the public. And until we can educate the public, get more responsible pet owners at the same time, the very first place to start is to educate. So I'm hoping that, you know, we work all together and get this situation a little under control. I appreciate you guys coming out that, and hopefully we can get some education going on. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and I'll go last. Yeah, so busy week, came back from Washington DC, and then on about three hours of sleep, I went to our Little League festivities, and throughout the last pitch, it's kind of weird. Normally, it's the first pitch, throughout the last pitch, Little League. So I want to thank them for inviting me to that. Today, I had a really unique opportunity. I got to be at Career Day at Lorraine Velasco School, so I met with groups of kids ranging from first to sixth grade, and they had some amazing questions, and so I really appreciate spending the morning with them. And then this afternoon, I attended the Grasslands Elementary School ribbon cutting, so I'm really glad that school is, is open on the east side of town. And again, as, as for the animal shelter, you know, we started behind the ball. We've just started, we're completely behind the curve, there's a lot we can do. I do agree that some awareness level and some education would help, but I also think consequences can help as well. And so if, you know, I know that we have animal lovers, and we have pet owners, and there's a difference in all honesty. And so, you know, I, I think there do need to be some, some consequences, you know, for the people that are contributing to this, to the issue. And, you know, like, a kid can go home and tell their parents not to do it, you know, same thing with speeding. I could tell Mom and Dad not to speed, but if I got a ticket for a few hundred dollars, that might, you know, mitigate the issue. So, so again, we're open to that. I know there is a national shortage with veterinarians, and I know that's a huge challenge, is we would have to find a veterinarian and somebody that wants to contribute to our city. So I'm open to any suggestions, any meetings, anyone has anything about that, that topic as well. I don't have anything else, so at this time, accept a motion for adjournment. Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. Move to council.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Second half.
All those in favor? Meeting adjourned at eight thirty-two.